On to the next level. I've had this discussion with President Cavallone more than one time, and I really do believe that a lot of community colleges in Michigan are doing things the way that they've always done it, expecting different results.
Yeah.
In my training as a counselor, that means that's insane. And we're not insane. We're going to do things right. We're going to find the students, we're going to be able to open them up. I think Holly made a very important statement, which is we have a lot of processes that were not student-friendly. Every time we come across one of those, I ask sem team to address it, to look at it, to see what we can do. Sometimes we can't change it because of the laws, the silly laws, but the law that's there, we can't change it. But oftentimes, if it's an internal policy that has been around for many years but no longer served us, they've been able to move the needle on that and be able to move that out of the way. Everyone wants to talk about enrollment going down, because high school enrollment going down. That's not our only population, and if it would, then we would be going down enrollment. But I don't see us going down actually next year at all, sir.
So that's one of the reasons why you're looking at the Latino population?
We're actually going to get a third, a fourth Detroit Promise Coach. The chamber is looking at us as being a place where the students come out of Detroit and get really well-served here. That's another population. There's another 100 students coming from Detroit that they're paying for. So there's a lot of things that we can do and do better that are going to increase our enrollment.
All right.
But we can't stop. I mean, we just, there's just no resting on your laurels. One of the favorite phrases I use, if we're doing things the same way a year from now that we're doing now, we're probably doing something wrong. We have to continually change to meet our demographics.
Thank you.
Trustee Mosib, did you have your hand up?
Yes, I did. Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to also, along with my colleagues, to commend you for the work that you're doing to find changes that we need to do in order to increase our enrollment, and seems like things are working. I would like to acknowledge Trustee Barrish's comment about the student experience. It's the most vital, important thing. And we may win a student or lose a student based on their first impression. So that first, when they first step into the college campus, this is the most important time that we need to make sure that we win that student, and that hopefully they would enroll in our college. So I appreciate all of the changes that we can do to make that visit more pleasant, more seamless. And also, once we enroll that student, how will you make sure that they're, whatever they're dealing with in the offices is consistent, and that they're hearing the same message, and that they don't have a lot of issues of going back and forth or being, you know, played like in a, I don't want to say bureaucratic system, but unfortunately, that's what happens when we have a lot of processes and a lot of hoops that they have to go through. I just want to mention that, for the record, the last meeting I did and the meeting before, I had issues with the deregistration process about students not being informed. And I believe the college is already doing a lot of things of informing those students who have, are in danger of losing or being de-registered because they don't have their financials lined up. Many have complained about financial aid status, that they don't know if they're getting financial aid or not, and being in the limbo of that. So I hope that for, with the winter semester, that we have something where we can alert these students, even if they don't know the status of financial aid. It's either we expedite that status and let them know, or we tell them that you have to get a backup method if financial aid is not there.
Well, I appreciate your comments on that. One of the things, we looked at whether we wanted to do an earlier deregistration going into winter, and we determined that we would not be able to let students know about it soon enough for them to be prepared. So we're not doing it this year for that reason, the same reason that you had brought it up before. It made perfect sense to us that we needed to be able to communicate this to students early enough. We're going to consider doing an earlier one next year, but then we'll have the entire year to be able to inform them when the deregistration period is.
And one item that I suggested is on the system itself, that they're registering through the same system, that would be a red bar that tells them, hey, you're in danger of losing your classes because you don't have your financials lined up.
Well, thank you.
You're welcome.
I do have to say, I believe it was your birthday this last week, too?
It was, yeah.
I saw it, so happy birthday. I saw that on the day.
Thank you.
Twenty.
Turning 25.
Any other questions?
Trustee Lane.
Yeah, I'd like to make a couple of points also. Dr. Mead's point about demographics, demographics are reality, whether we want to believe them or not. But we have to, because they dictate the reality that we're going to live with. I think they just compel us to work harder. We have to compete more, but we know that we have a declining and aging population. So let's not fool ourselves that we're going to have unlimited growth. We have a model economically of unlimited growth, and when investors don't see 10% growth, they're in a freak-out. That's not going to be the way the world will be. It will be sustainable, but maybe not expansive growth. So I think that reality has to be acknowledged. That being said, I like, I like brain science and behavior theories that can give us really practical ways to understand our own behaviors as human beings, and then make our experiences better and make us more productive. So I am always impressed with sociological theories like the broken window. So I'd like, which just says that if you let things decay and they get to the point where they look shabby, everybody, they may not consciously note it, but they subconsciously note it, and they react to that, and they have negative feelings about it. I was just in downtown Detroit. Anybody that's been down at Woodward and Jefferson remembers how there used to be like all concrete down there. And concrete is not a human, it's not a humane material. It's anti-human material. But design, simple design changes can really make huge differences in the way people feel and interact with spaces. So I'm saying this long-windedly to point out the area around the courtyard where the, I think it's Liberal Arts, the sunken one. It's just like the most awful space. But in downtown Detroit, you take the queue line up, and there are now, there's these big swing sets. You know, there are swings there. And if you haven't been in downtown, you should go, because you just have a completely different experience of Detroit in the 1980s, when everything was burned out and it was really horrible. Now, there, underneath Fifth Third Bank, they have an overhang. So there's couches out there. Can you imagine that we could have places for students to sit? Anything that keeps students here longer is going to contribute to their well-being and their positive experience with the college. So I'd like to suggest making the space around the campus more livable. I mean, where can you actually sit outside on this campus? There's no benches. There's one bench out there. And that shouldn't be. I mean, it's crazy when you go to a mall or a store, you see people waiting around. There's no concept of this is a human space. It's all about hard materials, metal, concrete, et cetera. That needs to change. Two other suggestions. So that being said, I'll return to Trustee Mosib's point. I had a horrible experience when I transferred. I transferred mid-year, second, winter term, to Ann Arbor, and I was in that line that you showed, or maybe longer, and that was to register. And my mom said, hey, if you can register, you can get through the term, which was true. Because you were so long in lines, and then, oh, I'm sorry, you don't have this signature. Go back to that building and get a signature. Then come back here, and then go over there. I mean, it was like running a marathon or something. You were just all over campus. But the experience is very important. So I think another way to get positive feelings about the college, which contributes to success of the college and success of the student, are to make every experience, as much as possible, enjoyable here. And that includes study groups, whatever we can do to encourage study groups or welcoming activities, that type of thing. So the last thing I would say is, I was in Washington DC. This is not something that we can do right now, but it's something we can think about. So the DC public schools need students. They've had huge loss of students and their tax dollars to charter schools. So one thing that the chancellor of the DC public schools has negotiated, and we saw students here complaining about this, I don't know how long ago, maybe a year ago, was transportation. So a student in DC, they show their student card, and they can get on a bus for free. We have a transportation issue in Detroit. You know, when I go to San Francisco, or I go on my phone, I want to go, or DC, I want to go to the Library of Congress, I'm at 3000 Arizona Avenue, I want to get there. Everything links up. It tells me what time the bus is coming, how many feet I have to walk. And instead, we have, what? We have, we can't even tell ourselves when we had road closures. So we should be better about stuff like that. All of those little things will matter, and I appreciate your mentioning all the little things that do matter. So lastly, I just wanted to mention, and you have here, that the college can provide better scheduling, preferred learning methods, blah, blah, blah. In addition, we don't want to hinder their progress. So I would just say that, because there are lots of barriers to students. Lastly, I guess I said this twice. That was a penultimate. Guest students, please think about guest students. And then, we had an initiative here a while ago, which we were, Latinx students were particularly the focus of, is achieving the dream. Some people will remember that. So that's an important one to remember as well.
And as to the guest students, I won't have Holly come up again, but she has done a great job in improving their process over the summertime. So we are seeing a marked improvement for students being successfully able to come back and take courses during the summer.
Thank you.
Yes, Dr. Mead.
I'd just quickly like to posit one of the things that you said, Ms. Lane, Trustee Lane. How many of you have heard of Dr. Terry O'Banion?
I know Terry, I mean, I know Dr. Mead.
All right, that's the '60s, '70s. He used to say that on community college campuses, "We don't have enough nature nooks," quote, quote, quote. And that's, there aren't places for students to sit and congregate. And that's something that we should be paying attention to.
Soft page, soft spots, soft landing spots are very important. You're absolutely right about that.
Just quickly to Trustee Lane's comment, I was actually in Lansing on Wednesday for the legislative session with the Commission on Middle Eastern American Affairs, and I met a lot of our legislatures in both houses, which was a great networking meeting with them. And we did talk about Henry Ford College and community colleges funding. And I actually walked over to Lansing Community College, and I walked into a library, and I, frankly, I just needed to use the restroom, because I was coming back to Dearborn. But when I walked into the library, it was a very interesting model. It's a brand-new building, but the stairs, in half of, there's stairs you're going up, and then stairs you're going down. But in the middle, you have like these carpets where students are actually sitting down and doing work, on the stairs. So, and they're plugging their chargers into the walls, and I was very neat to see. I actually took a photo, and I'll share it with all of you, which was pretty cool to see. So I'd love any out-of-the-box things that we can enhance student, out-of-the-box ideas that we can enhance student experiences, as well as out-of-the-box ideas, how can we recruit more into the campus who are non-traditional students, or the students that we have in our minds of being, just graduating out of college. There are many out there that we can reach, and avenues through marketing and through a lot of out-of-the-box thinking of how can we get them into the campus are many. So I applaud you for doing this hard work. It is, it is a lot of work that goes into it, a lot of planning, so.
Appreciate it. Thank you, sir.
I misspoke. It's nurture nooks.
Nurture nooks.
Nurture nooks.
Nature nurture. It's always been a question, hasn't it, the chicken or the egg? All right.
There's a distinction, oh my, over there.
Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you.
I've taken way more than my time, so.
We're not going to blame you. I'm going to blame my colleagues here.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Chair, may I make a comment on?
No, you may not. Yes, you may.
I want to underscore what Dr. Herbs mentioned, and I would describe the change in the culture, at least, I don't know if it's a change, but it's what's carried this, and I would say it's a culture of teamwork. And the anecdote that he described about faculty members coming to the supervisor of advisors is something that I'm not sure would have happened two years ago. And the identity of that person is important, because it's a leader in the campus and a member of the leadership of 1650, and he's here. Eric Rader is here, and it's Eric Rader and Tony Perry who come and say, I want to learn more about advising, because I want to be part of this solution, that exemplifies the teamwork that I'm sensing all throughout the campus. And, you know, we can't, we can't overcome the enrollment challenges on our own. In fact, if we work as a team, we still may suffer decline in enrollment. I'm worried about that, as some of the trustees have mentioned. But I will tell you that I do sense a significant increase in the view that we're all in this together, and that we can accomplish this through a teamwork environment.
Well, and I appreciate those comments. I think we all recognize that there are cyclical challenges to student bodies across the nation, and that we're all fighting for the same pool to be entertained at our behest. The thing that I think that we need to be reassured about is that a campus, and Trustee Mosib said it, and I've said it many, many times, is your first experience is the one you walk away with, and it makes the impression, no matter if it was a fleeting, bad experience or good experience, it tends to stay with you and color your impression of your environment for that time going forward. You have a fight with somebody on, or interact badly with somebody on our campus, you're going to walk away and say, ah, that's not where I want to be. So quite frankly, it is important that everyone has the mindset that we are all here as a team, but that the students are part of our team. That we have to embrace the fact that they are also the members of this campus community, and that we need to make sure that we all have a good feeling as we participate on this property in the various environments that we are engaged with. So quite frankly, we know that our own employees need to feel good about the place that they're at in order to make the students feel good about the place that they're coming to. And so I applaud everybody for putting forth that extra effort and changing their perception of their role and their obligation to make this campus one that everybody feels welcome. So I really do appreciate it.
Madam Chair, can I add one more thought?
Yes.
I have a service background, as some of you may know, and that's what we do. We service the community, we service the students, we service the parents. And one of the things that is always in my mind, having that background, is you need to, you need to anticipate their needs, and you need to just blow them out of the water with the expectations. So those are things that we just have to always keep in mind, anticipate the needs of our students, and those are here, and just exceed their expectations to the nth degree.
All right, then. Next item, please.
Discussion items. First, capital project funding. President Cavallone.
Thank you, Trustee Thorpe. Madam Chair, I'd like to discuss a memorandum that I sent to you all. It's to me, from Vice President Sackowski, and I will be stealing quite a lot of thunder from the chair of the Finance Committee, Trustee Lane, because we talked about this at length at the Finance Committee. But I bring it to your attention now, trustees, because I would like to engender discussion about it at this board meeting. And then, I'll be candid with you, I will be asking the board to take action on it in the November board meeting. This memorandum explains that we've got two major capital projects that will take place over the next several years, and they are, it will be no surprise to you, that we've talked about these nearly every meeting since I've been at the institution. The first is the technical buildings expansion. That's a $15 million project. And the second is the institutional energy master plan, which is a 32, I'm sorry, a $23 million project. And we expect to be, begin building on both of those projects in the next, hopefully in the next six to eight months. And the funding mechanisms for those two projects are outlined in a graph at the back of this memorandum that I circulated to all of you. And at the front of the memorandum, Mr. Sackowski, in a concise manner, outlines three potentials. And I can be candid with you all that I don't see any other potentials other than those three as a way to fund these projects. The first is using our reserves. The second is issuing a private bond, and I'll be clear, that second potential is this college taking a private loan from bond, from the bond market, and then we, as the college, paying that back. And then the third would be asking the citizens of this community to increase their property tax by .3 mils. And I won't go into the nitty-gritty details of this, but I will say to you that I've evaluated this at length with Vice President Sackowski. I've discussed it with your Finance Committee, and I'm here to propose to you that the right path is option number two, which would be us, as a college, issuing private bonds to the tune of about $15.2 million. The reason that amount is outlined is described in that graph that Mr. Sackowski appended to his memorandum that explains how we would spend these monies. There's a couple of reasons, a couple ancillary issues I want to make known to the public here and you all, trustees. First, it is my hope that the amount we need to borrow, no matter how we borrow it, if we borrow it from any of those three options, I hope that that amount is less, because I hope that Reginald Best and I continue in our efforts and are able to successfully gain philanthropic gifts for both of these projects. And I can tell you, I don't have any announcements on that front, except to tell you that we're working on it. We've got a couple of options that potentially may deliver gifts. Even one of your colleagues, Trustee McDonald, is on the committee of the foundation that is well aware of that. And so the picture of how much we need to borrow could be better. This is a conservative estimate. The second thing I want to talk to you about is an issue that I've described with Dr. Malako as related to the school board. And that is because we are, one institution legally, that being the public school board and the community college here, we by state law are limited with how much debt we can take on. And the amount of debt that we can take on is directly related to when and if our SEV for our tax-capture district is. So the reason I'm asking you all to consider allowing us to, and I want to be very clear about this, allowing we, as a college, to take on debt, not paid for by taxpayers, not paid for by increase in taxes, but issued by the college itself to the bond market, and obligations for us to repay that for 15 years. The reason I'm asking you to do that is because if this community does vote in favor of the bond that is before the electorate in November, or even if they don't, if the school board were to take on more debt, there is a ceiling that we, as one district, must adhere to. And the bond council is a advisor to the district, both the community college and the P-12 district, that has advised us that it is in our interest, if we, as a college, are going to take on this $15 million of a loan, that we do so with a vote from you all, but that we do it before the school district were to start any of, any bond that it would take. And of course, the bond that the school district is seeking is a $240 million bond that goes out for a number of years. And I should be clear that whether the electorate supports the BRICS bond or not, if the school district were to take bonds up to the cap that we, as a one district, has, this would be triggered. So that is the reason why I'm bringing this to you all now. We're not going to begin building until next year, but the law requires us to not issue bonds over 5% of our SEV without a public vote. I know that that sounds convoluted, but, and I'm going to repeat myself, which I hate when people do to me, but I want to be very clear. What I'm proposing to you, and I'm not asking you to take action tonight, but what I am proposing as option number two does not change the taxes for Dearborn residents. It does not ask Dearborn residents to consider changing taxes. This is simply asking you all to consider to allow us to take a loan as a college, which is the same way we built the last capital outlay on our campus, which is just the west of where we sit now. It's the Science Building, when the state of Michigan paid for half of that building, and this college took on private bond debt to finance the other half of it. I know I've said a lot. I asked the chair to put this on as a discussion item. I discussed this at length with the Finance Committee, and I'm happy to take any questions now, or next month when we meet. And again, my request is that you all consider favorably my request in November, that there be an action item to approve option number two in this memo by vote of this board next month.
Trustee McDonald.
I'm more inclined to go with option number two as well, but I was curious if there may be some benefit to doing a combination of possibly the private bonds and tapping in a little bit to the unrestricted reserves that would reduce the amount of interest that we'll have to pay in the long run, if that, if you see any advantage to doing that.
Well, Trustee McDonald, I can't, I can't give you a detailed thoughtful answer without my right-hand guy here, Mr. Sackowski. But I will tell you this, we do have unrestricted reserves, and if we did use some of those unrestricted reserves, that would take down the amount that we borrow, and that may have a benefit. And I don't, I'm not going to venture a guess to you now about whether that's worthy or not. But I will say, I'm happy to look at that.
Okay.
And I'm happy to report it back to the full board or the Finance Committee as soon as Mr. Sackowski has a chance to give me thoughtful advice on it.
I have one other question as well. You talked about in the information that you gave us, that it was a difficult process to get everything in place, as far as, I think that was for the private bonds, wasn't it? Do you, and it would have to be done by the end of November?
No, it would have to be, we would have to, we would have to take the bonds before the school district would take any bonds.
Okay, before we actually, not before the election or?
Not before the election. Before, and in fact, frankly, if the school board, for whatever reason, elected not to take bonds for eight, nine, 10 months, we wouldn't have to operate either.
Okay.
It's when we hit the ceiling of 5% of our SEV.
Okay. Well, my concern was only, I know that there is so much going on right now with the college, and it, this seems to be an in-depth undertaking to get all the paperwork and everything taken care of. I just wanted to make sure that it wasn't overwhelming anybody with the Higher Learning Commission coming and all these other things. There's a lot of balls in the air right now.
Yes, so I don't think that will be a problem. The college has history and experience doing this. We have really able bond council that also supports Dr. Malako and his team. While the process is involved and not easy, it's not something that, if this board acted in November, that we would struggle to do before the school, the school board, before the school, the P-12 issued bonds. And of course, those bonds would be supported by taxes.
Right.
I've communicated with Dr. Malako, and I think the timing, if this board were to act, would not impinge the P-12. I know that, it wouldn't. Does that respond to your question?
Yeah, and I'm thanking you for your recommendation, because I don't know of too many people on this board that would be ready to go for another mill increase or head towards the tax public.
Trustee Thorpe.
I'm going to echo some of the things that Trustee McDonald said. Was curious about the idea of using a combination on there. When I looked through the three options, I was immediately turned off on option three. We've asked the voters and the residents for enough. And I view number one or number two, either using our reserves or using our own, doing the private bond, as that's us putting more skin in the game. That, I don't want to use the reserve, because then if something goes wrong, we don't have enough in the bank account to last too long. If we do the private bond, yeah, we're going to have a debt out there that we'll have to repay, we're going to be paying some interest, but if it is as good as we think it is with reducing our energy costs, it shouldn't really have a big impact, it looked like financially, right? We were going to say that what we'd be paying in principal and interest should be equal to the savings that we're getting through the Energy Master Plan. Does that sound about?
Yeah, that's right, and what makes it even more in favor of option number two, and just for the public's benefit, option number one is using reserves, option number two is issuing a private bond, and option number three is going to the voters and asking them to increase their property taxes. And trustee Thorpe, option number two is, is, by, it's significantly the best choice right now because of the, the interest rates. And it's, it is so cost-effective to take, to take a, a loan right now, that it almost, it does incentivize you to take more, as long as you can pay for it. And, and this, this graph that I've shown you shows how we pay for it, by the savings. When you, when you can borrow money at this low expense, it, it's almost foolhardy not to take, as long as you have a payback system that is outlined here, it's almost wrong to use reserves when the money is so inexpensive to borrow.
With, with a financial background and looking through these options, it makes total sense to me to do the bond for that, that reason.
The private.
The private bond.
Trustee Lane.
Okay, I'd like to just make a couple of quick points. First of all, President Cavallone, my, I'd like to take you a little bit to the woodshed, because like when I hear about raising taxes and spending millions of dollars, I mean, my first reaction is like, ah! Uh, shoo! I, I need like a long introduction to that. Dr. Malako's really good, as he was pointed out at the last meeting, we were talking about that bond for two years, so I hate to hit the panic button when I see a short time and a big project, so that's just one thing. I would like to clarify, the, this, my reaction was the same as trustee McDonald's. Wait a minute, why, why do we have this big cash reserve, but we're not using it? Is the distinction that we're using some of it versus all of it? Because we have some payments in here, correct?
Yes. Trustee Lane, we are going to continually, and it shows on this graph, that we will continue to use operating funds and reserve funds. However, if we were to, if we were to fund this completely without borrowing any money, the first page of this memorandum outlines that it would take reserves down.
Yeah. No, I just want to answer trustee McDonald's question. We are using some of our reserves, and trustee Barry brought that up in the meeting, because my thought was, wait a minute, why are we borrowing all of this? We're not going to sit on a pool of $30 million and then borrow all of it.
I'm sorry, trustee Lane, I misunderstood.
Yeah, so, so we are using some reserves, and I think we have an obligation to do that. And then also, by going to the private bond market, I think.